It's working.
I got one from Saracen.
It's showing that we're streaming right now. I'm just trying to. West Warwick, we're in under Western Town Council. Yep, relax. Ready whenever you are, Mr. President.
Meeting called to order is now, it's actually September 21st, it's now 8:02 PM. Town council meeting and town council change is 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. We've already did prayer and pledge stuff.
Skip right over. All right. Councilman Messier?
Yeah.
Councilman Lichardi?
Here.
Councilman Bourget?
Here.
Council vice president Williamson?
Here.
And council president Goslin?
Here.
Quorum on record.
Before we begin, I'd like to make a motion to move up letter K number two, the update on the Tuxedaw Valley Historical Society building project. Only because Jerry Telly is here, I know he has to, he can't stay all night, so.
Second.
Move in second, Jeremy, come on up. All in favor of moving it up?
Aye.
All right.
Jeremy Telly, 36 Rowland Avenue, president of the Tuxedaw Valley Historical Society, giving the monthly report. Phase two, which consisted of rough electrical, rough plumbing, insulation, and boarding. Three of the four things have done, plumbing, electrical, and insulation have been completed, inspected. We are due this week or next week for the borders to come in and plastering. I believe I told you we received the second grant. We just signed the contract by the end of day for the finishing work. That'll be phase three. We're looking forward to being fully finished by early December. We want to have an open house. First part will be similar, which we usually do. I'll keep you advised if everything's on schedule. When we did the addition also, this is just for you guys, there was three or four electrical lines underneath that had to be reworked and they ran at lights in the Crompton Playground. Two of them have been reconnected as of yesterday, so you should have lights back there. I gotta check with the director for the timing and stuff like that. I don't know what they did. But we have two more to do. Other than that, most of the exterior has been done. This work has to be done in the back. We have enough money to complete the project. A little behind schedule just because of materials and stuff like that, scheduling. We had to put it off until we get the second grant and you just can't get a plumber yesterday. It just, that's our problem. But it's progressing very well. We're looking forward to reopening. People there, all members of the society have put in a tremendous amount of work. And again, we thank you for your support. All councils, I gotta go back probably five years. You've all supported us, never one negative. So we appreciate that. Something that we may have to look forward to at a later time, I just want to bring you up to date. In front of the Historical Society, where that little john comes for the crosswalk, we have a large drainage issue right there. It just sits there all the time, stagnant water. Just, I'm just, keep it on your back burner. That's not going to be addressed now, but just making guys aware of it. That should be corrected at some time. In the winter time, that ices up, freezes up, and it's a problem too. But other than that, our project is on course and we shouldn't be done like this.
Any questions for Jerry?
Just, well, I mean, I think, or Mark maybe, on the drainage issue. Is that, that state, right? Or is that us?
I think that's, that's still town road there until you get Route 3. Is that, I'm pretty sure that's still town until.
The section of Main Street that actually is state, then it turns to town. I don't know where I found down that goes though.
Okay.
I don't know where the drainage issue is under there. You know, but we have, we're gonna try to address another issue with the water. It, they're really, really heavy rains. Water comes down School Street.
Oh yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty quick.
Not the new addition, but the old addition.
Yeah.
We still get water in the building. We're gonna have to do something for berms or something on property. We'll, we'll look into that in the future, but this is, I'm slated that.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jerry?
Perfect.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the September 7th, 2021 regular town council meeting and the minutes of the September 7th, 2021 executive session.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Sorry. Move in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve? I'm reading the point as I, sorry. Approve? I apologize, I was reading the point.
All right, liquor licenses. Transfer of Class A liquor license from L&amp;K Corporation Doing Businesses Louise's Liquor to Rhode Island Wine and Spirits Incorporated for premises located at 1745 Main Street, Units 10A and 10B.
Move approval of the transfer?
Sorry. Move in second, any discussion? Is the owner here? Just giving everybody a heads up, Louise's Liquor is going out of business. Building is up for sale once this liquor license is transferred. So if it gets transferred, just want to make sure we're all set on taxes and everything else. Road?
Good evening. The new owners are aware that they are responsible for Louise's Liquor for last three quarters of this bill. They know that, so we approve the liquor license in the understanding that they have to pay those.
The last three quarters of her taxes.
Yes, right now it's.
That's all we've done, it's closing with the attorneys.
Yeah, right now it's, it's, they're current. The first part has been paid and they're current, so.
Any other questions?
No. Did we have to announce that we were acting as the commission? Asking a question.
You're the local licensing authority, Town Council 3515.
So I just want to pull that one.
Town Council, the local licensing authority on the ground, General 3515. So even though you are acting as a liquid control or liquor administrator, you would want to make that a question.
Any other comment, questions? Public comment on the liquor license? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Business licenses, request from Rhode Island Homemade Donuts Inc. for a vixeling house license.
Move the business license?
Move in second, discussion? Is the owner of Rhode Island Homemade Donuts here? Again, this is the old Dunkin' Donuts on Provin Street. And is everything up to spec on that?
The sewer account is delinquent, but that isn't, that's the owner's responsibility. But that needs to be paid because they'll, they'll end up in tax sale because they got that from the.
Is the.
And the.
Is the business owner aware of that?
The visit, not, yeah, the new, I contacted the new business owner, but I also, we also were in contact of the owner of the building. And we haven't heard back from him as of yet. So that is pending.
So who's, who's responsible for paying that bill? Is it the owner of the building or is it?
I believe it's, it's the owner of the building. I think we had this problem with, before with Dunkin' Donuts. There, there was a Dunkin' Donuts that had the same issue with the sewer account. Well, why, it's, it was with.
West Warwick.
Yeah, exactly. We had the same issue. But I'm sure we'll hear from him hopefully by tomorrow.
You should, I'm sorry, but you should require that, that payment be made because that's not subject to closing because it's not on the municipal incentive. So if in the past, that problem was with prior owners and new owners disputing, what was it? So I would, I have, the council should pass this subject to, with notice, not only to the old owner, but to the new owner. Then it's not.
Well, it's not, but it's not, they're still paying the bill regardless if that building is empty, correct? I mean, this is still, they're paying, the bill, they should be paying, they should be paying regardless.
But the point is, behind closing, if the town is in a, it's very difficult to get it from the prior owner and the new owners are going to test it. So you should make your approval subject to that payment, but also notice provided to the new owner and the old owner. Or I should say, the existing owner and the potential owner. That's what's going on. Should we just table it? This has happened too many times in the past.
Should we just table it instead of doing that until the next meeting?
If.
And she's pretty confident that it's gonna be paid.
We're not signing off until it gets paid.
Right, yes.
Right, and we won't issue the.
So, so the business owner, let's say, we're not meeting for a couple of weeks. So if it gets paid tomorrow, at least the business owner can, I don't know how far along they are. I know I drive by there and it's, they're open the windows, so. I just don't know if, you know, the business is ready to open next weekend and we postpone it for a couple of weeks because it's already got paid. I would just put it as pending and Rose will, trust me, Rose will keep my.
And that's, that's not unusual. We do that on a regular basis.
That's right.
The solicitor's point is that this is a little different tax because it's sewer tax. But I'm sure you'll be all over it, Rose.
I make a motion to approve it pending the payment of the sewer.
Second.
Move in second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Appointments and resignations, appointment of Nathan Hannan to the pension board for term ending November 18th, 2022.
I would move Nathan's appointment with the provision that the BCI is received prior to him attending any meetings.
Second. Move in second, any discussion? Again, Nathan Hannan? Come on up. I ain't gonna put you on, put you on the spot.
Nathan has graciously agreed to become part of the pension board. We've had difficulty filling those seats. We've not had quorums, we've not been able to conduct business. That is something that we will continue to do for the next year anyway. So Nathan has agreed to and submitted his application last Thursday. We wanted to get it on this agenda because unfortunately, last Wednesday, a pension board meeting was canceled because there wasn't a quorum. So we have people waiting to get pensions. So Nathan has agreed. And Nate called me earlier today and said that he hadn't been able to get to the Attorney General's office since we spoke on Thursday. So I'm again asking that it be done and explain to him that we've been done pending receipt of the BCI.
I've made, just to get you in on that, so I'm going to Nathan Hannan, 36 Erie Avenue. I've made several attempts to go down during my lunch hour to get a BCI check. And because of COVID, you have to text and you have to wait to get in. And unfortunately, I have not been able after three attempts, but I will have it done before the 29th.
Thank you.
And if you, if you aren't approved yet tonight, you've just got to come to Tom Hall at Sworn and give that once that BCI is, is free and clear.
Sure.
Thank you. I think we talked on the phone a couple of times.
Yes. Treating them.
Treating.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up also because, as Mary Beth said, we, we need people over there, sorry.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Nate? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Ordinance amendment, second reading of ordinance approving a tax stabilization development agreement for the historic renovation of Arctic Mill located at 33 Factory Street, also identified as plat 16 lot 105.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Move in second, discussion?
We had a lengthy.
We did have a lengthy conversation about this. Mark, you just want to give us any updates?
Again, this is for the Arctic Mill Realty Partners that we did have a presentation for two weeks ago for a stabilized tax payment agreement. Planning Board, or excuse me, the Arctic Village Redevelopment Agency had reviewed this agreement and provided a positive recommendation for you as the council. We believe that it's in the public interest as it requires the organization to rehabilitate that structure directly across the river behind us, significantly increasing the tax base for the town and providing significant revenues, jobs, opportunities, and enhanced property values as a town. Specifically, the development looks to be favorable as it's in the Arctic Village redevelopment zone and is expected to use minimal amount of town services. I believe the, the numbers that were presented last week, during the construction period, the assessment rate will be the same as it is now for a total of just under 59,000 per year. And then during the 20-year stabilization period, each residential unit will be taxed at an assessed value of 32,500 at a tax rate of 34.70% per thousand, similar to our past agreements.
Any questions for Mark? I do want to apologize, because last meeting, Chairman of the Board, Jim Marsh, was here for questions. He was popping in and out, I didn't see him. But it was not yet tonight, but if anybody. They were strongly in favor of it and that's why I thought, come. Hearing no more comments, I'll take a roll call vote, Councilman Lichardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Bourget?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
And I go with yes.
Second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 11 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Section 34 Roots Where Trucks Are Prohibited, an appendixy of the total ordinances of the town of West Warwick, Branch Avenue.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Move in second now?
Second reading, no through trucking on Branch Avenue.
And again, we talked about this a little bit. I took a ride through the idea of that and I've got a better understanding of how that was working. Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilman Lichardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Bourget?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
And I go with yes.
First reading of ordinance adopting and enacting a new code for the town of West Warwick, Rhode Island, providing for repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing a penalty for violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such code, and providing when such code in this ordinance shall become effective.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Move in second now?
That's the fancy language for saying we're gonna adopt the update of our code. I was before you a month and a half or so. And I had sent you the 690-page document that had a underline and red line of the changes that would be made. The council approved that document, subject to adoption. Now we're here for adoption. The ordinance has to be passed before Munich Code is going to do the printing and the putting together. So what I'm asking for tonight is to get Munich Code to go ahead and finalize this year and nine months project that we've worked on. I'm really pleased with the product. I just, I'm praying to do it because it was a lot of work, well worth it. I think we'll, we'll see it. As we move forward with our ordinances, like two tonight or one now we're presenting in the next meeting, we'll know we're starting fresh. We're not adopting an ordinance that is contrary to something we already have. We had a clean start, you know, we had 60 years of changes with no, no semblance of anybody ever going through all of that. So I'm asking the council to approve this and let's move forward into the future.
Any questions for Al?
No, I know Al has done a ton of work on this and when we did talk about it and thank you, Al, for all that you have done and it's been a lot of time and effort. One thing that we did talk about is, is working with the new town clerk, making sure she's in the, in the process.
And very.
We work really well.
She's, she's approved it and been looking, tremendous to work with. I have to say that and I have to say it was a labor of love, it really was.
Thank you, Val.
Any other questions for Al? Since this is an ordinance, I'll take a roll call vote, Councilman Lichardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Bourget?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
And I go with yes.
First reading of ordinance amending Chapter 11 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Section 34 Roots Where Trucks Are Prohibited, an appendixy of the code of ordinances of the town of West Warwick, Danby Street.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Move in second now?
This again was approved by the traffic committee. It's a very small street. Next door to it, there's a business operation that has an exit with their trucks that are powered off quite early in the morning and there's really no reason for them on that street. Traffic committee approved it. I spoke in detail with Major Ashmore. I spoke with Councilman Myster for it. And I'm asking you to put another no-through trucking in on Danby Street.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote, Councilman Lichardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Bourget?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
And I go with yes. Thank you. Thank you, Al.
Moving on to new business, we have the August 2021 monthly finance report.
Good evening, councilors. Current year tax collections total 21,434,648.07, which is 32.17% of the budget for current year taxes. As we have completed one current collection quarter, collections are trending over budget. Collections tend to trend over budget for the first quarter as many taxpayers pay the annual bills in four rather than twice. As the quarters progress, it will level off. Prior year tax collections total 362,699.66, which is equal to 24.18% of the budgeted amount. This line will be adjusted for the 60-day rule and will be accrued back to fiscal year '21 for that actually exact amount. Overall, the revenues are at 24.53%, which is higher than expected at 16.67%. The town has also received the first tranche of each, of the, each of the two categories of the American Rescue Plan funds. We have received 1.5 million of the NEU funds and 2.8 million of the county funds. These funds are recorded in separate funds in the general ledger. The guidelines to spend these funds are extremely restrictive and require community input. A committee will be formed to vet recommendations that will ultimately come before council to final approval. Expenditures are trending under budget at 11.11%. This is 5.56% of the expected. The city center has current operating expenditures of $94,419.11. Operating revenues are $115,545.91. As I mentioned earlier, the auditors will be coming in to start fieldwork on October 4th. And the bank balance as of 9/15/21 was $19,725,202.2.
Any questions for Kristen?
No, those are going to be two separate line items. We're gonna keep them separate, you're not gonna combing those.
Two separate funds, not even line items. They're separate funds.
Perfect.
Each have their own funds.
Perfect.
Because they're gonna have different.
Restrictions.
Restrictions.
So, so will more money, you said this is the first wave?
Yep, so they're coming in two tranches each and it's 50% each time. So I believe one year later is when we get the second tranches. Yep.
And that's who you're talking about with, you're gonna have the restrictions of how you can spend away or can spend.
So I'm hoping at the next council meeting, I'll give a proposal or recommendation on how to go about seeking public input so we can stop the process of vetting recommendations, coming up with some cost estimates, explaining the restrictions that are gonna be involved in the reporting mechanisms and then start improving our treaty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. We're reading number two, we're on another.
Discussion action relative to the Flat Top Playground replacement as requested by Councilman Lichardi.
I've had conversations with, with the town manager about this and we have some, we have some ideas of if money is coming in, if we can use it on, in recreation or not. But I think, I've been getting a lot of questions on, on the playground because it's, it's gone. So what do you, is it, is a playground gonna be put in its place? Or is it gonna be left vacant? Or what are we, are we gonna do something totally different? So I just put it on there as a discussion, just, just to let people know it's still on the radar. I personally, and we've, we've all talked about this, I'd like to see a newer playground go up. And obviously with the whole ADA compliant thing and do it the right way. But that, that's kind of my intent is, because we really have nothing. We have something at Green Bush, we have something at Crompton, but we don't have anything in that, that corner. And people use it as a kid to play ball down there. So I see people on it all the time. So I just wanted to leave it on there. If, if it's something that we're going to replace it, I'd just like to put it on the list of, to see how we're gonna replace it and the cost of items. And typically, when you buy playground equipment, this is the season because everything goes on sale and you can get it at a discounted rate because it's, it's the end of the season, it's the year. So it just would be something for the recreation person to put it on. Or maybe have, have it in a recreation meeting, recreation committee meeting, possibly?
Right, again, I, I think recreation is an important service that the, the town is expected to provide. So important that I think that we need to do an assessment of all of our playgrounds and come up with plans moving forward, whether they're one-year plans, 15-year plans, or longer. Obviously, we, we all understand that to provide the appropriate product out there, it's, it's extremely costly and we want to be good stewards of the funds that we have. I'm a believer and it's my intent to propose a significant amount of American Rescue Plan fund to go towards recreation because it's something that citizens can see and be proud of and use. And it's not necessarily gonna cause a structural deficit going forward. So my proposal is gonna be that. So I think we really need to engage and activate our recreation committee to get that public input and assess what we have. And then really, perhaps make some hard decisions because we need to be good stewards of the resources we have and decide how many we want, where we want them, and then come up with the appropriate age groups and clientele that we envision each one's using, whether there's a one for super young, one for our senior citizens.
What's, what's the status of our recreation committee as far as, we should have been short members? I mean, we haven't had a meeting in, when's the last one we had in years, right?
Well, three.
Well, we just, just the point, remember last time.
Yeah, it makes four.
So now.
So there's one vacant.
Hopefully they can.
It's not on the.
It's not on the list.
Not on the list.
I think there is one vacant.
There is a vacant seat.
So perhaps as, as the American Rescue Plan stuff comes up and as I mention it, perhaps we'll get more interest in it because I think that's gonna be a valuable asset and we need that partnership to, to pull that off.
Any other questions on that?
I just wanted, I got a few angry people contacting me off Flat Top also because they can't use it all the time. So I'm hoping that we can put another one back over there as well.
Thank you.
All right, discussion action relative to the Factory Street playground and costs associated with upgrades and ADA compliance as requested by council president Goslin.
Mark?
Again, I worked with the DPW director and his staff and finance and tried to come up with a grid digging through what happened before our time with the initiation of that project and then what has happened. project and then what has happened since then under direction of the DPW Director to make that facility compliant. So my quick work shows that obviously the original project was slated for $145,600, of which $100,000 was from a DGN grant and $45,600 from a WART one capital fund. I estimate that remediation, once that initial project was done, obviously there was a report and a need for remediation to make that facility ADA compliant after ProBuild did what they did. I estimate that it cost $43,298.28, which is what was expended to remedy what I thought was non-compliance with ADA guidelines after that initial effort. And that includes different design group, O'Brien &amp; Sons for additional compliant benches, fence padding, retrofitting, some fencing gates. And the biggest one was for to enhance the ADA required parking facility. I believe we also did some add-ons that really enhanced the facility that I would term perhaps as going above and beyond what was required of us, but to make it the premier facility for the town and to make it fully ADA compliant. And I estimate that cost was $96,420.29, of which the bulk was the poured-in-place flooring and the fill and prep work for that flooring, placed flooring was a significant portion of that. And then several hundred-dollar expenses for additional swing, the density testing for that flooring, speed bumps and signs and the ballers. So it's my belief that the total project costs slightly in excess of $285,000 if it was all scheduled.
Any questions for Mark?
That, I read the reports that were completed for that and there's a lot of issues with that whole project. So for a playground, we paid how much?
The total cost was $285,318.
$285,318 for a playground.
Eighty-five was just for the flooring.
Yeah, but that seems really excessive, especially considering that the initial bid that went out was for the mulch to go down and obviously we paid for that and then we took that out to put the new thing in, which is much nicer. I agree there. I just don't know, like, hopefully if we get a recreation committee put together, we don't run into the fiascos that we ran into this one again because for me.
I think we have obviously a lot of lessons learned. I think, you know, project management is going to be a significant priority going forward. While I was putting this together, I just happened to Google a few of the corporations and industry leaders that were involved or had put some things in. And there is, we were, this is pretty much in the middle of the road compared to some size and structures that are out there. Like I said, putting together a recreation facility is extremely expensive and it definitely deserves its due diligence and oversight to get the best bang for the buck.
But being $140,000 over budget of $145,000 budget, that shows some serious problems.
Yeah, I don't know if I term it as being $145,000 over budget. Obviously, it was kind of vetted and decisions were made to do something better than what was originally anticipated. So, you know, I just think it was a community decision, but.
With pre-planning, it would have been a lot less than $285,000, that's my whole point. The original budget was $145,000 in the total cost, which I haven't been up there in a couple of weeks now, but I don't think it's completely done yet as far as the money gaming and, you know, the other stuff that's.
Parking space, it will be done in-house.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's still a cost even within-house because you're taking away from other projects. But so it's still $140,000 more than what the original budgeted amount was for the playground, which is almost double of what the playground was. I just, I think we could do a better job as a best committee.
So Mark, I'm not disagreeing with that and, but some of that as far as the parking lot, you know, when we first initially built that playground, the parking spaces were out in the parking lot.
Right.
The existing parking lot. So whatever the parking lot cost, that was an add-on, you know. And I'm glad that we are ADA compliant, but we as a council, when we discussed the wood chips, and I know you went on to come to that, when we discussed the wood chips and, I'm sorry, what is her name again?
Denise Willem.
Denise, when she came up, you know, there was concerns about maintaining, keeping them from digging and so we as a council decided, you know what, the amount of manpower, the amount of time, effort and whatever else up there, that $86,000 is, let's just say $86,000 for that rubber membrane was a matter of us not going up there, raking it, maintaining it, wasting hours on a week to continue to make it ADA compliant. So at the time, you know, is the rubber membrane the best way to go? Maybe not the full facility, maybe just pathways and whatever. But at the time, the council decided, you know, we had a little extra money to cover that and why not let's do it now because we were saving money in other areas. So we wanted to update that. So out of that $86,000, like Mark said, $40-something thousand was the actual overage of the expense of the playground. We added that on later on for upgrades. So and I agree with you when you're saying, but it's hard to say it was an overrun because that was something we added on.
Absolutely. Changed the scope.
Right, I get all that. My point being is only just that if we pre-planned better, it would have been a lot cheaper. And as a community, I think we've built a few playgrounds over the course of the existence of this town. And I understand things have changed with ADA, but I think we should be able to build playgrounds.
I think you're going to find, I think you're going to find when you do a flat top, that it's not going to be a $25,000 job.
Oh, no, I know it's like a $25,000.
And I think Councilman Luchardi can attest to that.
I just hope it's not going to be $285,000, you know, so.
But it won't be that, but because you have a lot of stuff there, that's a fresh playground. And yes, there was stuff that we had to correct. And meanwhile, why, you know, it's the next product, the next item on the agenda is, you know, when we had our lady come up here and give us the opinion on that, she came down to River Point and gave us her opinion last year, a little over a year, year and a half ago. And we just somehow or another did not get that done within a year and a half. So we can get into that in a second, but is there any other questions on the Factory Street?
No, I think you don't just answer your question, I think there was, there's just so many people that were involved at a different time in this, in the, this took way too long to get done.
It started when Councilman Drew.
This was done before I was even on the council, I've been on five years. So normally it's, you write the grant, you receive the grant, you make the plans to go forward, and then it just, the process gets done. But over that time period, I think there's just so many people involved and I don't know if everybody had the knowledge of what was, there's too many pieces to the puzzle and it shouldn't have been. And that's how things in general get messed up.
That's the key word right there, it shouldn't have been. If there was actually a plan in place, it wouldn't have happened. There was no plan in place. When I read in the report, I mean, it was very chaotic, nobody was talking to anybody, everybody was just like.
There was no project management, which is a big.
Which is a huge part of it.
Yes.
That cost us a lot of money. And that's all I'm saying is, in the future, we're talking about building the Flat Top, we had to make sure that we have a project manager, that we have the recreation committee is actually meeting and talking if they haven't been in three years. I mean, again, you know, that's a deficient part of our town.
Bobby?
I agree.
And again, I think we talked about it last council meeting about communication. So.
All right, so next. All right. Update on River Point Park Playground as requested by President Goslin.
Mark?
Again, after meeting down there, we did close off, the Parks and Rec crew did close it off and secure it. They have since gone down there and graded the pathway and I believe the director is working towards getting that, the actual walkway A-Town scheduled in the very near future.
Just out of curiosity, are we putting the parking lot in there now? Don, if you want to come up? Because I know the meeting we had, you were told we didn't have to put a parking lot in, but I see we're doing some grading outside that.
It is not my intention to put parking lot in there. It is my intention to bring some asphalt, recycled, reclaimed material and compact that and then draw the, or paint the lines on it so we have the, to ADA, we have to have those lines and we have to have the, they have to degrade at one and a half to, or less than 2%. We're going to shoot for one and a half all the way from the parking lot, all the way into the playground itself.
And that's basically what we, the town, did not do, is put the walkway in and the handicap parking spots. Those are the two items that.
We were so focused on Factory Street, we had to get that one done before we moved on to a second project and we'll get that one taken care of. I've already had Jeff grade it, rough grade it, and I'm hoping to get down there Friday or Thursday to turn around and just run the grades, make sure that we're all right at less than 2%.
Thank you.
One last comment. You guys glossed completely over. Your DPW did a hell of a job on Factory Street Playground. There's a lot of sweat equity that went into that. The guys put a lot of time and effort into that and I don't want that to get just blown under the table. They've worked really hard the last six to eight months trying to make that, in fact, they're out there today, the kids are taking the sleeves off.
Yelling like, see, I'm going to be dead over there.
They're taking the sleeves off and putting on as a hat so they can be in the cabin hat.
Yeah, I yelled at him, my son can smell me. I'm embarrassing, I yell at him, like, we don't need more, like, no problem.
So we put some screws into it today, so they shouldn't be able to do that anymore.
Thank you. And again, you know, I was at the meeting, Alan Alazo was at the meeting, Mark was at the meeting, Mr. Ouch was at the meeting. You know, a question was asked about all our playgrounds and Don and Jeff are working on putting plans together. And it does, and again, like Flat Top, Crompton, any other playground that we have, what's the one?
Natick.
Natick, don't want to.
Brookside.
Brookside. So all of them, they've been here for a long time. You know, if somebody does file a complaint or whatever, as long as the town has a plan in place, that's, she's fine with and she's willing to work with us. And it doesn't have to be done tomorrow because she knows expenses of towns, each city in town. And it was set, you know, they don't, they don't go looking for the problems. It's when they get a complaint, they have to act on the problems. So at that point, she said anytime we need to talk to her, she'll come down, give us ideas, questions, concerns. And again, we can put those, once we put the plans together, submit them to the state, we don't have to act on it right away. But again, if a complaint comes filed, she can reply back, I do have a plan in front of me and they plan on getting it done, you know, you could put 20, 25 on there or whatever. It just, as long as you have a plan in place.
Denise has been very helpful through the whole process. She's come out several times up to Factory Street and she actually was a proponent of us and happy that we actually went with the membrane despite the costs associated with it.
Oh, like I said, the membrane is much nicer. I agree with it. You know, it's just that.
It's an expense, it changes scope.
The initial planning would have been.
And the elimination of, because we have the wood chips down at River Point, the elimination of maintaining that is, there's going to be rubber mats installed underneath the swings, so that's the only place they really can dig up. And I also have, I'll be here a little bit, but, you know, Jeff and the Parks and Rec Department will be on top of a lot more. I think Councilman Luchardi and I both can attest, and I think everybody up here can attest that, you know, last two years previous to COVID, the Parks and Rec Department was struggling on a weekly basis where we would get constant complaints, phone calls, coaches. So, I mean, and I think they're going to be doing much better than the way, the way we structured it for the past year.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I was a proponent to privatize the Parks Department for a long time, rightfully so, at the condition of our parks, they were, they were embarrassing and they were awful. It's like.
Just wants to stay on topic.
I know, it's like, we're talking about River Point Park, but in addition to all the other parks, including River Point, that's on the agenda. But I have to say, I'm very quick not to, to be positive as well and to give praise where it belongs. And I think our, the leader of our Parks Department is doing an excellent job. It's, it's like, again, like night and day. You know, you don't have weeds four feet high, you can't have the grass cut. Grooming the parks is a lot of work and it's not going to happen overnight, but I think we have a really good plan in place and we have the right people down there, so. I can't mention any names, so I can't say Jeff Babel's name, who's doing a great job, so I won't, but.
I'll read this later.
But, anyway, so now I'm going to get back on topic, sorry.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mark, for the updates.
Consideration a request from Councilman Borje for independent review of town procedure relative to Leeds Landscape Construction Ang versus For and Properties LLC KC 2017-1008.
I'd like to request that we table this till after our executive session. It doesn't really make sense to talk about it before you end.
Do you have a second?
Second?
Motion to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Proves?
Aye, savvied.
Is that going to be on tonight after?
Yes.
Okay.
Announcement by Councilman Luchardi, a Patuxet River Authority event to be held at Crompton Fishing Pier on Saturday, October 9th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
It's just what Sarah said, just an announcement. They've worked with the Patuxet River Authority for about five years now and they not only take care of the property at the Crompton Fishing Pier in Veterans Square, but they also do the cleanups down there, they cut the grass, they take care of the trash. And we did this before, we had a fishing derby before COVID and it worked pretty well. It is a handicap fishing pier, so my thought was, the Special Olympics have been canceled the last couple of years. So, and it's very disappointing to those athletes and we have a team here in West Warwick. So now that they can get out, it'd be great for them to be able to do something and that's the perfect place. So I contacted the PRA and there's going to be an event namely for the special needs community, not to exclude anybody else, but it'll be from 9:00 to 1:00 on Saturday, October 9th. I know it's a holiday weekend, but, and I'm going to contact some other groups, businesses to provide refreshments or any, you know, things like that, small things like that. But we also have money that, I secured money from Belize Honda a few years ago, twice. So we have another $5,000, I believe, Kristen, in that account that we can take, that's dedicated to events in town. So if we could, I may be coming to you for some of that money a little bit so we can maybe get some, some poles and some gear and some, whatever they need.
Do you know John Grach?
Yeah, I'm going through the PRA, so they're going to be working with different nonprofits to be down there, so.
He does, he gives away the free fishing also, he has to definitely contract with them.
So it's a good event, maybe the police fire could stop down, just say hi, you know, I think the group down there would love to see them. And it's for kids and adults, so. Anyway, just to let everyone know.
Thank you, Jim.
Approval of claim from Joseph Chaka of Burlingame Road in the amount of $727.64. Move approval of the claim.
Second. Move in second. Again, if you read the claim, basically we had an incident where it looks like a town employee may have dropped a branch or something on somebody's truck. Mayor said $724.64 after labor, so it's almost things, and it's too little for the insurance to go through the trust, so.
It's an accident. An accident. We owe it, we should pay it.
Yeah. Any other comment? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, savvied.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Board Review, one alternate member vacancy with a term to expire October 2021, and two vacancies with a term to expire October 2023. Pension Committee, two vacancies with terms to expire November 18th, 2022. Patuxet River Authority, one vacancy with a term to expire June 30th, 2024. West Warwick Housing Authority, one vacancy with a term to expire November 2021. Arctic Redevelopment Commission, one vacancy with a term to expire. Arctic Redevelopment Commission, one vacancy with a term to expire October 1, 2026, and we're still in need of a tree warden.
Actually, to add on this though, we just talked about it, we are one member short on the Rec Committee, we have four, and I don't know if you've spoken to, Ben Marzullo just came on, but any of the other three, just to double check that they're still interested, because the worst thing is to set it up again and then all of a sudden we have somebody that can't make it or can't make the night or doesn't want to be on it and then we're back to, we can't have a quorum again. And I think we have some important things coming up on the agenda, so.
And I think, you know, let's not talk too very bad about this, but there's some League Presidents out there that probably don't know about this committee right now that are running, you know, Cal Ripken or the softball league and we can reach out to them and I think they'll be, they would be honored to serve on this committee in the way they, especially with them with young kids and they want to see this town, they've been here for many years and they want to see making sure that Parks and Rec is definitely for.
Just make sure that, make sure that it's on next, next, this next agenda.
I'll work with.
No, but I wanted to add, just so.
I'll work with Paula to find out. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Other comment? And before we get on, I just want to read something real quick, inspired public comment. Mr. Perry, David Perry, he's actually a constituent of mine, he lives right next to his library. He sent a letter to Mark Na, manager, town manager, Mark Na. Dear Sir, sir, I'd like to offer a comment on the work of Mr. Jeff Caldwell and two young employees whom I had the occasion to meet in relation to renewal and beautification of one of our West Warwick's well-known, visited and photographed landmarks. The red caboose at River Point located along the bike path serves as a reminder of how bike trails derive from train rails. In the shortest of time, Mr. Caldwell, in a couple of work, has completely removed overgrown brush, vines, bushes, weeds, et cetera, and transformed this mini park to its former attractive Welcome to West Warwick site located at our section of the East Coast Greenway Bike Path. It is my pleasure to draw your attention to the good work and efficiency of Mr. Caldwell and his fellow workers. David Perry, he's the former chairman of the West Warwick Friends of the Greenway and anybody remembers when, when that caboose was installed, that they were a big part of getting that done for West Warwick. We've had it painted over the years. I know Barbara Teback was also instrumental in calling, she called me up on it and she calls Jeff up on it and, you know, it took Jeff a couple of weeks and he started, I actually, the first day I drove by, I saw all the plants gone. I was like, Jeff, what'd you do? You just took out all their plants. It was, don't worry about nothing. And I said, all right, I drove away and sure enough, there was nothing to worry about. It was, it was actually, Dave called me up, wanted me to come down with the Daily Times. I refused. I said, Dave, this is, this is their opportunity, your opportunity. They got the work done and I'm glad it's done. I'm glad you're impressed with it because they spent many years with the voice, everybody else, and now that committee's no longer there. And, you know, there was a little miscommunication once again, we thought the school department was taking care of it, we thought the town was taking care of it. We were cutting behind it, but nobody was, they thought, everybody thought that this, this group was still intact. And once we got it all figured out, again, kudos to Jeff and his group and they'll maintain it, very little grass cutting or anything like that, but they also, I want to thank the West Warwick firefighter who took the stone that was in front of there and he actually put Welcome to River Point Park, carved it in the stone for, for nothing. And so that's the entrance way of River Point Park and it's, what a transformation. It made the headlines in the front page of the Ken County Times. Mark, look, if you want to say something.
I'll go next.
All right, and that's all I have to say on the caboose.
Just another civic announcement, if you don't mind, so I can earn my dinner. The Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation is going to be presenting a free do-it-yourself composting class tomorrow night at the library from 6:30 to 7:30.
No, I can't.
West Warwick residents that attend have an opportunity to get their own compost bin at half price from Rhode Island Resource Recovery, so it'll be $17.50. There is a sign up link on the solid waste recycling page. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, public comment? So just take me an address for the record?
She's looking at you in the camera. Sure. Tom, old Six Colonial Way.
Tom, we just want to turn that way, I know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Are we there? Don't wait no longer, functions. Are we there?
You broke it last week.
No, no.
Drop it before.
Tom, old Six Colonial Way. Back a few items on the agenda, playgrounds. We've discussed all, well, not all, but most. David and I, I think it was you, we had a conversation with last week or the week before. Hebert's Field, there was a disgraceful thing done many years ago, big playground, major playground in the town, Hebert's Field, it was, it's probably donated by a great grand uncle, Senator Hebert. Some people knew it as Payon Street Park. Two basketball courts, two tennis courts, playground, baseball field. And now it's, it's a daycare center, if I'm not mistaken.
Something daycare.
Yeah, they, they pay the town $1 a year for.
No, I'm sorry, wrong, wrong one.
But it, it's some sort of a, a school.
Child care.
They, they.
Child care, right?
They got rid of the playground and put this childcare place that they pay the town $1 a year for that property and if I'm not mistaken, that's, should be coming up as due. What's the future of that? Are we going to sell that property off that was donated for youth recreation by the late senator? Or is that going to be reverted back to recreation for the town? It was a sad thing when it was done.
That was done by Mayor LeVey.
Correct, the Lord High Mayor.
That was probably the day before my time as far as, I mean, I was living here, but I'm fairly young and not listening to too much. But yes, so Mark Na and I have received some emails from the property owner and their attorney and would like to sit down and discuss with us the future of that facility.
You, the property owner, you mean the, the building owner?
The building.
Because the town does still.
We don't maintain anything.
No, no, you own the property.
Yes.
The town, we own the property still at a dollar a year.
And they maintain everything, any tree limbs, anything.
Right.
They maintain the property.
I understand that.
So it is discussion that we do have to, I mean, we talked about this 10 years ago, you know, because when we were at our times, we're thinking, hey, we'll lease them for a dollar. But we want to find out more about it and how it transcribes as far as that happening to a dollar and I'm sure somebody there might be able to tell us. And then we're going to, once we sit down and meet with them, and it's been a little hard scheduling right now with everybody, but once we sit down, we're going to bring it back to the council and see what our future is there.
So it's going to be something that'll be a public, you know, to discuss what that future is.
Absolutely, I mean, no matter what it is, if it comes back, if it had done a dollar in 30 years, I'm not saying that is, but even if it is, we still have to vote on that and, and talk about it.
A lot of the younger people, I think they're probably rather shocked to know that that beautiful playground disappeared for a buck a year. We lost, we lost big at that.
Does that property go up to Kenmore Street?
It does. From Kenmore to Payon and from the Senator's House, which it's the Plant Family now, to John Street, that whole three sides.
Because there's a gentleman who lives on Kenmore.
Top of the hill.
Yeah, I, I know him quite well and he actually maintains that portion on Kenmore as far as planting flowers, cleaning it up. He has actually, on a pole, he has the, the waste, dog waste bags. He's actually moving and he had asked me if we, as a, because, I mean, he looks really good and he took a lot of pride in it and he wants to know, because the town doesn't do anything with it.
Yeah, we don't.
So I didn't know if that would be something where, because the childcare place doesn't do anything with it either.
We'll have to take a, we'll have to take a look.
Just to let you know, in your discussions.
I know exactly where you are, that's up the hill, we used to slide down in the winter, the sleds and the saucers and from that, from the top of Kenmore down to the tennis courts. So yeah, I know exactly where you're talking about. There, there has been a lot of people, you know, that whole length of Kenmore that have maintained, you know, kept it decent because it's their neighborhood, it's their backyard, front yard, backyard.
And that daycare is very instrumental to this community based upon its federally governed, really, it's, it's, it's all done through grants and federal money and it's, it helps the low income.
Yeah, I'm sure it does, but the, the thing that was always, that was always in my crawd, many other people, was a dollar a year, we sold out.
Again.
And I know that's going back 30 years ago.
Over 30 years ago and I, you know, again, we're going to dig in and figure out.
Right, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Alan Alazo, Fire Robin Lane, and I just want to make a comment. I was overjoyed to hear the town manager talk about rejuvenating the playgrounds and recreation within West Warwick. I echo my councilman's comments about Factory Street doubling the price because that RFP called for an ADA compliant playground and the complete lack of oversight is essentially, oh my God, what happened? The point that I want to make out is, my understanding is, no one has been held accountable for that fiasco. I'm glad that River Point is being taken care of, or will be. Flat Top, we need to rejuvenate the programs. When I was a kid, I'm glad Mr. Oates raised the issue of Payon Street. Each neighborhood had their own playground and B-ball was a big thing. They used to have the rivalry between Natick, Payon Street, Crompton, and they organized tournaments. It was fantastic. They used to take the kids to Mischknock three times a week during the summer and that essentially just went away. ADA is there, it's relatively recent and relative is my age compared to youngsters. However, we need to comply with it, the checklists are out there. It's, it's so simple. The solicitor went online, printed out some list, all you have to do is check things off. It's that simple and I'm glad you're going after it and we're going to do it right. One other issue though, you need to take a look at with this money is River Point, it's been rejuvenated, but it amazes me, it's like riding one of the old rides at Rocky Point, going up and down over the dump. And I went down there a while ago and there's some groundhogs or something digging into the soccer field, not very deep, maybe six inches, but they're breaking up refuse. I have a piece of rusty metal that one of them brought out in the console of my car and I'm worried that some youngster playing youth soccer is going to hurt himself on that, maybe get cut, catch a shot. So that's something you need to look at and if we're going to be doing infrastructure, you've got, you can get the money from the federal side, look at that and do it right. I used to have a chief on my first ship, he said, there's never enough time to do it right, but there's always enough time to do it over, like Factory Street. So let's see if we can get it done right the first time around.
Thank you, Alan.
You know, I'd like to just respond to that quick. I agree with you, with caveat. When you, when you're putting like with the playgrounds we're all talking about, and yes, I have a child with special needs, I believe in that community and those people need extra attention, so I'm all for the ADA, 100%. But when you're talking about a structure that's 30 years old, the question is, all right, well, even, maybe even older, I don't know, but you're talking about something that's kind of, it has deficiencies, some, some pieces may be on their last leg. I don't, and I don't envision going down there and strapping Band-Aids on different things. And, you know, with the Factory Street, it's a little bit different because you're starting from, from zero, so everything is brand new. But when you go down to like Crompton, you know, and I've been down there, it needs some work. Question is, how much money and how much work do you want to spend using the checklist? Or thinking, let's just get rid of it and bring something brand new in? You know what I'm saying?
I believe Mr. Goslin and the manager were there at the police and she talked about what modifications needed to be made based upon the law. It's in the law, is the law, is the law. Someone posted one time.
And I just want to point out, she, she also said this is more of a civil rights situation than an actual handicap situation. So, so when you do do an upgrade, you know, there is a checklist that you do have to file, we've all known that. Alan's brought to our attention, many people have brought to our attention over the years. Now, even when you're upgrading, soon, like right now, like I said, if you had a plan in place and you haven't upgraded it, as long as you have that plan in place, and Alan's going to, you know, Alan said, I have an issue with Crompton Playground and he filed a complaint about the Dobby horses or whatever is down there. As long as there's a plan in place in her office, she is good with it and she can work with the town with that. But if you're going to start adding a new structure, like, you know, Flat Top, then, and, and Flat Top is much easier, you have a bigger parking lot, it's flush with the parking lot, so to make that ADA compliant is pretty easy, right? As far as, you know, you do need the two handicap spots with the double Y with the lines in between, you know, which isn't there right now. But if, if we do put the new structure up, that's stuff that you will have to do, so you have to take that in consideration.
Of course.
Right? So, and, and, you know, we had, and, and Mark even asked the question, you know, Mark did ask the question, he goes, I, I understand the situation, I understand that we need to put the walkway in, I understand all that, but, you know, especially with open weekend of soccer, how many parents have we planted over on that playground? And she actually said, right now, this has nothing to do with actual handicap, it's civil rights. So, you know, and that, and that's where I left it with her. And like I said, she's open to helping us with everything and everything we need.
I, I think.
We actually built a relationship with somebody on it, so it worked out.
Exactly, she's very good and she, she, as I said before, she's very good. I think your point is, we have to take a look at the town as a whole and make a decision as to what we can and cannot do. And some of them may be hard decisions.
Right.
What kind of money can we spend? How much money do we, the whole, the whole nuts not going necessarily to go to playgrounds, so we have to make those, those hard decisions.
I just want to point out, and, and I know Tom is very passionate about Payon Street, he had that conversation with me, you know, everybody's talking about different playgrounds. Well, throughout the years, there's been playgrounds added, you know, River Point, you know, basketball, tennis, that wasn't there, you know? We had the tennis courts down there, the hidden gem that every, it's in the back corner, nobody knows, you know, select few people know about it, tennis, tennis diehards know about it, they go down there and get in there.
That has been cleared up though.
And, and Jeff took care of that too. There's been playgrounds added and playgrounds removed, so, you know, and, and, and Mark and I had a discussion that day was, how many playgrounds can the town afford and need? You know, you can add as many as you want now, but that comes with a cost of maintenance, taking care of upkeep, and, and you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just.
I know.
I think that's what you were saying.
And, and, and at what point is it too much? You know, if you got, if you put 10 playgrounds, 12 playgrounds, like the guy got Phoenix, there's nothing down in Phoenix, but everybody comes to River Point or whatever, so, or they go over the line to Coventry up in the back of, of Fairview Avenue, they go play over there. But I have nothing in Phoenix, right? This was a central location for everybody, you know, when, when that was decided. You know, some of us thought it was crazy putting there, some said, do we want to put it there, do we want to put it somewhere else? Do we want to centralize and, and keep building up River Point to bigger and better? I mean, heads actually applied for the grant to add on to River Point with more stuff for seniors to do, exercise equipment for seniors to go over there, stretch their legs, I'll do whatever. And, and, and we have to contemplate, can we do it? Do we want to do it? Can we afford it? You know, it's, it's, it's hard because even that playground was almost fully funded by heads, not, you know, when I say it wasn't taxpayers' money, but it was, it ultimately was federal money, so it was taxpayers' money, but it wasn't West Warwick's bottom money to, to put that playground and that's why we took the opportunity at the time to install that playground. Again, a little bit of miscommunication, it got reopened for no re, it should not have been reopened, we knew that from last year, from our meeting with the state and should have never got reopened, it got reopened by accident and, you know, now we're going to resolve it, it's closed and hopefully we get it reopened quick before the winter, but that's where we stand. I, I, you know how, you know, we've all, you've been on the fields, I've been on the fields all these years, we, we want to see new lighting, we want to see a lot of new things and, you know, hopefully Mark will have that for us the next agenda. Any other public comment before we move into executive session?
I guess I like the open dialogue here tonight. I like the folks from, everything going into playgrounds. At some point, and I just heard you guys kinda touch on it, the, the facilities need to be done, really, like, overdone. You go to these neighboring communities in LA, Cal Ripken's got some knockout fields and facilities and things, and I had somebody reach out to me today, this morning, to let me know that they've started to rebuild the Little League Foundation in West Ward, they've got two hundred players this year, okay? But we have facilities that are embarrassing compared to neighboring towns and cities. So to find out that local taxpayers have taken the time to sit down at a table, put together a league again, to where they got two hundred players, I like hearing that. The other thing is, uh, Monday, Tuesday, one of the days this week, DPW finally showed up to sixty-three Andrews Avenue to fix my neighbor's road that we've been going around and around with, had very good discussion with the, with the guys out there, they're a great group, was able to speak with the foreman, set up with the foreman to get going on in front of my property finally. My only concern is, he said he was gonna contact, um, DigSafe, I haven't seen any DigSafe markings out there yet, so I don't know if he's gone ahead and done that yet. I don't have this direct number. I just wanna be able to coordinate with him, because we all came to an agreement that I'm gonna set it up, they're gonna bring the asphalt, put it in, I even offered to have my men there to help them put the asphalt in. Everything was great, I just wanna be able to have my machinery from job on site before they're ready to do it. And I, I wasn't able to get his contact information. But the crew that was there, the crew that was there was phenomenal. I mean, you know, they didn't even bring any equipment, all they did was cut the road in front of my neighbor's house, which is a pretty good section, and they did manual labor. They broke it with sledgehammer, they picked it up, they threw it in the truck, they did a good job. So I just need to be able to coordinate with him to set up in front of our property, and we'll get it all set up. The other thing is, tonight I saw a position for, uh, pension board was given without the VCI. Is that, did you standard it?
VCI, if you recall, I, I believe, uh, Mr. Mazzullo suggested and made that recommendation that perhaps, um, as we do with business licenses pending, sewer pending, taxes pending, so...
Yeah, and I, and I spoke with you, um, I plan on putting it for another board, but I just wanna know, cause I had the same problem, you know, for some reason, the Attorney General's Office, you gotta like pick a number like you're at the deli, and stand outside and wait for your number to be called. And like he said, that, you know, my time's limited, his time was, was limited apparently, but I wanna be able to get my paperwork in for the board and know that I get that position so I can take that time and know that it's positive time instead of negative time. So is that acceptable, send in the application?
Absolutely.
Without the VCI?
We would honor pending same, same...
Same thing. Pending VCI.
All right, that's all I got.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other motion to move into executive session? Any other motion to move into executive session?
Gonna read the pardon. I'll, I'll read it for you, and then you can just make the motion, okay? Cause it's a long one. All right. Executive session, council may vote to move to executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two, collective bargaining or litigation, and Rhode Island General Law forty-two dash forty-six dash five A three, security personnel. Earnest Living Contract Amendment, and also post-June tenth, twenty twenty-one, Supreme Court decision, Town Council's review of Rieth Landscaping Construction Inc. versus Foreland Properties LLC, KC two thousand seventeen dash one thousand eight, and the Stroud Drive.
Section. Move in second, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Ayes, have it.
Give another minute. Thanks, good day. Good night, folks.
Katrina, we're gonna throw you out.